All right, let's start now.
Okay.
All right, 2A County Supervisors, Starcom Budget, page 39.
General sup and we get the budget from them, right?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Now, is this the one where they said they were getting another vehicle, is that correct? Or something added an assistant?
No, that was, I believe, that's Emergency Management.
Emergency Management, okay, that's page 38.
Yep. Yeah, that's a vehicle and an extra, I think, part-time employee.
Yeah, I don't know the increases here.
No.
Given that they have their board and they oversee their budgeting process, unless Dennis, you think that there's something with the Starcom budget that we need to look at? I would move to receive. We're looking at the Starcom budget and because there's not a lot of specificity and there's nothing we can do with the board, I move to receive and...
I'll second Jeremy's motion.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just don't forget to ask for discussion.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, first time I share.
We'll train you.
Sure, I appreciate that. All right, page 42, Youth Guidance Services.
And your motion passes?
Motion passes 5-0.
Yep.
Thank you.
This one I left the same, the reason I left the same, halfway through and it's 45,810. And my expense come up at the end of the year to draw court order child placements, so I left it at 100,000.
Now, was this the one that was added a couple of years ago?
Yes, because they can't go out of state now, they have to be in-state.
I'd move to receive.
Second. All right. Any... Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, passes 5-0. All right, 2B Emergency Services.
B1.
B1.
Scott Mitchell, Director, Emergency Services. So you can see the, really on the EMS one first, the biggest increase there is on the overtime, and that isn't a flaw by me. I thought last budget period when Michelle figured it, she didn't figure for 24/7. That is off our 207K program, which you can see there in the notes how I figured it up because it's 200, it's 2,764 hours a year. And so that's where that overtime comes from, to be able to cover services for 24/7 for 365 days. And that's the only increase there that is actually above what you suggested. It did lower the wearing apparel by two grand and carried that over into the vehicle repairs and the propane, but other than that, everything stayed the course.
Anything you see Dennis, anything commented?
No, it's just someday the board's going to have to decide, is it 24/7? Can we afford it? That's all I'm going to say.
So is it paramedic one next, or is it?
Paramedic, but also I think it needs to be reviewed on income, the townships, the towns, if we're going to provide full services, they need to pay more because they budget for it. So where's the money going when our budgeting for ambulance services, the emergency service doing it all? We should be getting the money from the towns and the townships. That's something we need to address.
So the paramedic one, the only thing that's the increase...
Can you prove that one? No, not yet, we haven't, one second.
Received?
Yeah, we haven't received it yet. Any questions, discussion by the board?
Can I just ask on holiday overtime versus regular overtime?
Yeah.
So on page three, we've got 9,000 and I'm looking at the last three years, 0 and 511, 2623.
If you'd like, I can address that question. It was asked to add the holiday line recently, so that's why there's no historical data. In the past, all of that would have been in the regular overtime line. I think the sheriff's office also did that within the last three to five years, so they can separate the actual overtime that is paid on a holiday versus a regular overtime.
So how I figured that, Jeremy, is I took the holiday and the way that we're paying now the holiday, that's how I figured that holiday pay. Because that figures in the crew working the shift and then the ones that are getting paid not working the shift.
So for your department, what days are considered holidays for your staff?
Same exact days as the county, but it falls on the exact day it is.
Okay, so like Easter?
So like if January 1st is on a Sunday, to us, the holiday is on Sunday, where to everybody here, it's Monday.
So I guess my original question kind of goes to, would it be a fair statement to say we didn't have holiday overtime in the past? And now we're trying to have a little more visualization of what holiday overtime looks like, so we've created a $9,000 line item for holiday pay? Is that a fair...
Was the holiday pay one that has changed to double time? That was approved within the last six months or so? So the way that the holiday pay is calculated is different than it used to be? So we haven't seen how those figures are going to work out for an entire fiscal year yet. But we have separated out the holiday pay based on the former calculations for holidays, which was, I think, double time and a half?
Yes.
And now it's two times extra or something of that sort?
Yes.
My biggest thing, just not to get into the nats, you know, itty-bitty there, but to try to figure out, we're over $25,000 in overtime. And to figure, you know, we have the same overtime budget as last year. And then to see, we have 9,000 now, whereas with holiday overtime, we really didn't have it in the past or have it to such a degree. And I don't know if that's because we changed the rates, which is one explanation, or if we just have a lot more overtime because we're trying to cover. So I'm just trying to get my mind around.
You know, in the past, they were running, you know, 20, 24, 36. But with the changing of the, you know, how we restructured the overtime and how that was paid on holiday and how the holiday was paid, you know, that's, that was how I, because actually it was a little less than, it was like $70 less than the 9,000 when I backfigured it to get the double. And I left it the same because it's like, well, you're close enough in this.
And then do we schedule overtime or that just is incurred when it's needed and there's not enough to fill?
In our shifts, the 207K figures on a 212 hours and 28 days. Truth of the matter is, so take that 28 days times 24, there's more hours in the 28 days than the 207K allot's for. It's more than 212 hours. So that's where that overtime is. And with the three shifts, it varies every, every period who has the bulk of the overtime in the three shifts because it depends on how it's fallen in that 28-day cycle. Because they work a 24-hour shift, so they are on 24, you know, and then a 48 off. So it depends how they fall in the cycle, who will have, you know, what shift will have the most overtime because one shift only has eight hours and one shift will have 18. So it varies per 28-day cycle.
Yeah, so each shift essentially has 16 hours of overtime.
Yeah, I mean, you could figure it that way, yeah. Yep.
Well, I just asked for the record, what days we recognize as holidays here at the county? Because I'm assuming we got President's Memorial and Easter left for the fiscal year.
I'll start at the beginning, Martin Luther King. Secondary Rose is just a little different, but Martin Luther King, Memorial Day, July 1st, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Friday after Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving, Christmas, and the floating.
January 1st.
And January 1st, that'd be the first one of the year.
Yeah.
That I had in there.
He said January 1st, he meant January 4th, right?
January 1st.
Really?
She said July 1st, but she meant July 4th.
But I meant July 4th, so New Year's and Independence Day.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's July, she said July 1st and it meant July 4th, sorry.
So really to try to cut down on overtime, we need to run a fourth shift per week.
That or not, that or for the board to decide not to run, yes. But the problem is, is we took so long to find third paramedic, I don't know how you would, without doing some pay incentives or offering or pay, how you would find another paramedic to cover.
Find a fourth one.
Yes, yes, because we went almost a year trying to fill the last position with a retiring person.
Yep. All right.
So that 10402 item, the, or excuse me, is that, yeah, holiday overtime? What are we at for the year? Because we've already had labor, veterans, 4th of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Eve, and MLK. So we should have kind of an accurate... Well, we got President's Memorial and Easter, right, left?
We don't have Presidents, just Memorial Day left.
Oh.
For this fiscal year.
And when did the rate change take effect?
July 1st.
Okay.
It wasn't, yeah.
So right now, and Michelle, maybe you have this more up today, but we're 2623 through the fiscal year right now, is that, or Dennis?
I've got an updated view on your screens. So we're at 4869 right now on that line, holiday overtime. It's the blue line that goes across here. Our current history is right here. So these are the pay dates that would include the holidays that we got included there.
So we shouldn't exceed 6,000 this year with one more holiday.
I'm going to interrupt this, we're at 4:30. We're at 4:30 set time. We'll continue after the board, before the board meeting, okay? Yep. All right, all right, call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want us for a moment of silence, please? Maybe seated. First item on the agenda is approval agenda, and I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Bintner, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Set agenda, consent agenda, excuse me. Items 5 through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item 5 is approval of minutes of the January 23 meeting. Item 6 is approval of claims. Item 7 is from the county treasurer, Tina Bertrange, is approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Dream Homes LLC. Item 8 is from Board Administration, Karen James, approval of appointment of Stephen Warren to commission to assess damages, category B. Also, B is approval of resolution appointing, approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process, and C is approval of lifting tax suspension for CM. Item 9, Deputy Commissioner of Elections, Steve Hoffmeyer, just to receive the results of the Farmers Drainage District election and the Garrettson Drainage District election, both had on January 20th, 2024, to canvass the elections and sign the abstract of votes and certificates. And then lastly, number 10 is from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Moved by Taylor, second by Raddick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
And again, don't forget to ask for discussion and then on the, on that folder there too, there's some things for us to sign, like the, that personnel transactions will be in there, we all signed, but everything else will probably be just you or...
Okay, thank you Keith.
No problem.
Thanks Scott, we'll make sure we do everything above board, aye?
Hey, it's the first meeting.
That's right. Luckily we got some veterans over here, right? All right, first item on agenda is number 11, Lila May's House.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing, come on forward. We have approval and presentation of proclamation for the National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and...
So are you going to read it or do you want me to?
Um, normally we read it, but if you, would you like to read it?
I would love to have it read.
Okay, yes ma'am, I can, I can read that here. Come on forward, give us your name and just tell us who you're with.
I'm Sister Shirley Fineran from Lila May's House, and we are happy to be here the last day of the month in January, which is Human Trafficking and Slavery Month. And yesterday we had our reopening ceremony, you may have seen it on the news for Lila May's House. Lila May's House is a home in Sioux City for adult women who have been sex trafficked. And presently, we have three women at the house. And so we're happy to be here and part of national movement, but we have sex trafficking that happens in every county in our country, including Woodbury. So we're happy to be here and sometime I'd like to come back to the board with the support for money for what we do. We are entirely funded by donations, so.
All right, do you have a lot of volunteers from around the metro area?
We have, we are getting more volunteers, it's really difficult to have volunteers do a lot, we've had a lot of volunteers get Lila May's House ready for, renovated the whole, or the house. And last week, last year, we had a water main break because of the big freeze we had.
Wow.
So volunteers mostly for driving women to medical and therapy appointments and some work around the house, which needs to be done, so always welcome volunteers.
All right, all right, well, thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Everything's for us, and let me read the proclamation here. It's proclamation for National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal, whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. Whereas this problem is found even within our community, whereas every business, community organization, faith, community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problems of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now therefore, Woodbury County Board Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month and encourage our citizens to become more familiar with the problem and to work towards solutions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions?
I'll move the resolution and thank you for all that you do, I really appreciate it.
You're most welcome. It's hard work.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries 5-0. Item 12 on the list from Community and Action Agency, Jeanne Logan, come on forward.
I know, we just did the budget, so I'm really sorry to be here to tell you that I'm out of money, I'm actually overspent. On the 23rd when I prepared this, we had obligated $75,133. Since then, we've had another two funerals. I'd like to explain part of the reason, what has happened, that we know that pandemic funding has stopped, but now Section 8 housing, there is a nine to 12-month waiting list. So that makes it really difficult for people that would income qualified to access Section 8. And we have additional difficulty in landlords not always wanting to accept Section 8. But at this point, it's the waiting list that is keeping people off. The other part of that would be, might know that the city of Sioux City administers the homelessness funding, they're out of money. They're referring everyone to our agency. And so general assistance does do rental assistance up to $500. I will tell you, in Sioux City, $500 doesn't even buy you a month's rent. I ask Antoinette Green, she does her housing inspections, the cheapest property that we know of is $650. It's in efficiency and it's at 17th and Nebraska, probably not the best neighborhood for, you know, quite a few of our citizens to live in. So we do, as an agency, have emergency shelter grant funding, we also have tenant-based rental assistance, those can help a longer period of time. But the demand is huge, we, we're getting really dozens of calls every day for appointments for rent. And I thought, this is the new 2024 income guidelines, so on one side are our programs, on the other side, you're at 100% of the federal poverty level for what you pay, so it's really a low threshold. And I thought I'd give you these, at one point in time, I thought I'm going to ask you if we could raise the income guidelines, and now I've, we've spent all this money, so not going to ask for that right away, but just in burials alone, we've already had 20 this year, so.
Michelle, do we need to have a motion to receive?
Yeah, I'd love to receive it.
Okay, second, all right. Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes 5-0.
So Jeanne, can you just remind us for the good, you know, when people hear federal income guidelines at 100%, sometimes 100% sounds like a, you know, a high thing, what is, what does 100% actually mean?
So for a family of four, 100% of the federal poverty law guideline for gross income would be $31,200. That's why I thought this would be helpful because it, it does make a difference the size of your family. And the LIHE program, which we administer 200%, is about as high as we go. The housing guidelines are higher than that.
Yeah, so I look at a family of eight, not that I have any experience, but 52,000 wouldn't, you know, and a family of four surviving on 31,200, that's a pretty, pretty low threshold.
It is a very low threshold. In different years, we use this money for different reasons. We have not really used a lot in utilities because we have other resources that the agency has that we've been able to use, so we haven't used any. Incidentallys would be, we're buying work clothing, maybe steel-toed boots or pair of gloves for us, somebody that has outdoor work, black pants or scrubs or something like that. We have, really haven't spent a tremendous amount there this year either. Other years, we've gone way over the budget. So we're roughly at about half a year, so that's why I'm requesting another $75,000. I, I'm hoping I don't have to come back again, but rent is killing us. It is, it's just, the demand is just great.
How many people have you had applied just in the first six months here of this fiscal year?
We have served, with shelter, 112 households, altogether we have served 146. So that's everything from bus passes to, you know, the rent or, or a burial, which would be the most expensive thing we would cover.
All right.
You said there was 20 burials?
Yeah, so far.
I'm trying to remember what we've averaged in years past, I, I don't remember it being much more than, was it like 11 or 12 usually was it not, or?
I think the most we've ever seen that, that the county paid for was 27. And the reason that it hasn't been up higher is because FEMA has paid for any pandemic-related burial. So if COVID is on the death certificate, FEMA will take care of that at a much higher level than, you know, the county would cover the cost of that. So I think there's probably been an uptick, we just haven't had to cover that. And I, we haven't seen a COVID burial, so I'm assuming the FEMA program still exists. I guess at the point in time when we get one, then I'll, I'll look into it, but...
What's the county's cost per burial? Or what's the cost per burial?
$1,100 and then to open and close is, I think, another 490. We did also, thanks to Joshua, we were able to, there was a person that had a county burial they found in a state, and so that money was refunded back to the county.
Dennis, so my, my question for you is, is there anything, you know, I'm supportive of this funding, you know, and I look at, you know, the income guidelines of 31,200, it's important to know that's a maximum, so we have a lot of people that are under that may have $22,000 in available funding, you know?
I know.
So I guess my question for Dennis is, is there anything in terms of our position that we can do in meeting this expense that would be less advisable or more advisable as far as where it comes from?
I agree with you, I think we need to fund it, and the funding options would probably be low, gaming revenues, I really don't want to take any more out of reserves because we're just, we're just depleting them, or really lowering them to a lower level, the reason so much in the next fiscal year, so for funding this, I'd go to gaming revenues for the 75,000, and then for next year, let's wait and see.
All right. I would be supportive of that because especially as we have anomalies with burials especially, that number can, can fluctuate and that doesn't maybe set our baseline for the following year, quite as ILO will look at it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I wish I knew that there was a rental program coming out, so I could tell you that that was going to go away, but I think the city is supposed to learn whether or not they get additional funding in March, so maybe before the end of this fiscal year, there'll be, or this program year, there'll be some relief.
That'll be a huge challenge because I know most places, when you look at rentals, they're 1,200, 1,100 a month in Sioux City and, you know, I don't know how much our 500 is going to cover for so many people, keeping them in their place, which is the goal, right, to keep them there. So that seems like...
Like I said, this isn't a good time for me to ask you to raise that limit because there are so many households that need assistance, but yeah, I appreciate it that you recognize that when we only pay $500, families are coming up with twice that. And now quite a few of the landlords are asking for double deposit, so that double deposit and the first month's rent is a lot of money for a family to come up with. Thank you for your help always.
Any other board discussion?
I'd move $75,000 for FY 2024 from gaming revenue.
Second.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries 5-0. All right, item 13 on the agenda is reports on committee meetings.
So CERTS Board of Directors meeting, we had some discussion on some van orders that we ordered in the past, those should be arriving soon finally, it was one of those things where you bought them and, you know, thanks to COVID, we had to sit, hurry up and wait. So those should be coming in and then they would be looking at adding some additional drivers to operate those van service buses. Those are more likely out in, outside of the Woodbury, Woodbury County service area, but obviously that is part of what CERTS does. We did do a renomination of officers, and I am again the chairman of that for another year. The Housing Trust Fund, LIGRTIF or ZUNTIT, I don't know exactly how we pronounce that, but again, same thing, we did election of officers, I'll be the chair of that again this year. But again, same thing, we did election of officers. I'll be the chair of that again this year. We did have, you know, quite a few completed projects and one that we're all pretty proud of because it's so difficult to find veterans that income qualify. Because you have guidelines on what you have to spend those federal dollars on. One of those that's more challenging is veterans. One, because either, you know, the, the population of them is smaller. Two, the population that is in the federal guidelines for income is also smaller. We did have an individual that did qualify, so a lot of those funds were used to make quite a few improvements and keep them in there. An 80-year, 88-year-old Korean War veteran that his family is very appreciative and it made a huge impact. So it was great to see the progress on that. We also had the RPA CERT policy board meeting. The chair for that will be Gary Horton out of Plymouth County. I'll be the vice chair. And again, that's more of a policy board. We, we discuss a lot of the construction projects coming up. Of course, Highway 20 east of Sioux City is going to be very unique over this next year because they will be working on the northern lanes. So it'll be all the traffic shifted down to the southern two lanes, which are amazing now. It's hard to ever imagine what they were like before, you know, how hilly it was. They've made a huge impact on the, the safety on that road. But from Lawton to Mowville, there'll be a, I can't remember if it's a resurface or just a complete tear out and redo, but it, it's going to have a huge impact on driving for, well, Mark Nelson especially, so.
That section of road is awful.
But it'll get done. So that's all in the planning and part of the work that we do over there at Semco.
Anyone else? Any other citizen concerns? I missed it, excuse me. Reports on committees. Let's read the next line. Okay. All right. Item 14, citizen concerns. Uh oh. We might have a ruly, unruly citizen coming to the mic.
This will be quick. Last week, you awarded our bid for PCC paving on 250th Street to the low bidder. Jacob didn't report the low bidder. It was Kroll Incorporated for $2,472,020.82. We had six bidders on the project. The range was the $2,472,000 up to $3,336,000. So I, I thought it was great. We got six interested contractors. So we were, we were in a good letting for this project, so.
Where's Kroll?
Yeah, they're, they're out of the 515 area code. They're the ones currently doing the Highway 20 project. They've got their plant sitting there at the corner of Charles and Highway 20. But I, I didn't have that information on the bid tabs that I brought in on my phone here to report to you. I was waiting to see if you found it.
Did Kroll PCC?
Just Kroll Incorporated ought to be where, where you find. It's an eastern Iowa company. They used to deliver concrete to me when I was in Lynn County.
C-R-O-E-L-L?
C-R-O-E-L-L, yeah.
They do work all over because they're doing projects in New York, Minnesota, Paramount, Minnesota.
Yep. Well, they also have ready-mixed plants all over the state, much like GCC does, so they're, they're a pretty large company. New Hampton. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. All right. Any other citizens' concerns? All right. On to item 15, board concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so this item's not for any discussion or response, but just annually, as we come upon the budget certification, we've received from the comp board a very reasonable, I think 3% across the board. Just a reminder that the Board of Supervisors, if anybody so desires, no less than 30 days from the public hearing, can adopt something different. If anybody is interested, I'm not going to put that on unless there's somebody else who would like to. I don't need any response for that. But just a reminder that it becomes a timing issue if anybody desires to do anything other than meaningless. So, thank you very much.
Good reminder. Thank you. Any other board concerns? Dennis?
I did not do an update today on income expenditures that I usually give you after the LEC meeting. The authority, because the time element wasn't there to get it done because they're going boom, boom, boom like that. But I can give you a rough estimate here. We had a million, I believe a million 4,000 left. And we did add on 149,0078 today and also 250,000 because they did reduce the contract with Hosman by that building maintenance shed. 149,000 is a rebate from Mid-America, so we should be pushing 1,403,000. Now that's to cover anything that comes up. We got a lot of items going on with the deal. So the other thing is we have not allocated the other 471,000 of ARPA funds out of the original 10 million we did obligate. So that's still hanging there, but probably hopefully in a month or two, I'll have a better idea if they don't need it. And, but we're sitting with 1,403, which is a pretty good sum of money.
I was going to ask, does that include contingency? And I kind of forget how all that has worked. Is that all funds on hand that's available?
That's part of the whole contract. Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Good clarification.
I guess in regards to the LEC, I'll share with Dan, you were at the meeting. Matthew was not and Jeremy and Keith weren't, but I had an agenda item today that looked at potentially the LEC using $200,000 of the LEC maintenance fund to pay for Kenny Schmidt's budget item for maintenance and repairs at the new LEC once we get started this next fiscal year. And the reason I, and it was just a discussion item. Hopefully we can have it on the meeting in two weeks and, and have some more discussion and potentially a vote. Dan Moore was not there today. So just Ron and I had a discussion. But when we were going through the budgets last week and we saw Kenny's line items, you know, this first year, we're kind of stabbing in the dark as far as what those repair and maintenance costs are going to be for this first year. And due to the fact that we're, you know, nearly a year behind schedule and the county is taking on damages by not having prisoners there, obviously that, that 20-year maintenance fund is not going to get used this first year because there likely won't be prisoners up until the very end of it. And if there's not prisoners in there, we don't have maintenance, we don't have repairs, we don't have wear and tear. So it has been my suggestion that we, that essentially Kenny would zero out his maintenance and repair portion of his budget for the new LEC and present that to the LEC authority. We would approve that, potentially approve that budget. It would obviously take two votes to do that. And then we would authorize a level that Kenny could spend money, basically pre-approved before he would have to come back and have the claims approved by the LEC. We ran this by Jason Kaminsky at Allers and Cooney last week to see just how exactly we could do this. Legally, the only way we could do that is to have the LEC have the full control of the expenditures on that. And so he did say that as long as those expenses are repair and maintenance only, not any operating costs or anything like that, we'll be just fine. Takes no amendment to the lease or anything like that. So I hope that, that we could approve something like that. I think the first year in, we're going to have a lot of warranty work. If there is issues, there'll be warranty work. I don't think that, I think Kenny's budget will be on the high side. I think you do have to look at it realistically, that it's a 19-year maintenance fund now, not a 20-year since there's not inmates in there. And so I'm hopeful that we can, can do that because we could pass the 200,000 back to the county and thus to the taxpayers for some savings. But that'll be determined in two weeks. So anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that we weren't at the meeting today.
Do you mind if I ask you, Mark? I'm really, if I could make a comment and then I have a question. Very appreciative of you identifying that, couching it the way that you are, because it's the right, I think it's the right thing to do by taxpayers and it gives us a year where you have this, let's call it an overage of 400,000, which is about to request. So thank you for that. If I could just ask, what was the initial reception? I don't have to give zero to 10, but what, was it just a discussion? Was it initially favorable on the part of at least your one other authority member?
I think Ron's, sure. I think Ron's concern was, you know, can we forcibly stop this after one year? Does this continue onward to where we're draining the maintenance fund in favor of the county and not for the maintenance and upkeep of the authority, which I can definitely understand that concern. However, I think the circumstances would point that this is just a, a one-time issue that we're working through and that, you know, none of us were figuring on having to take, you know, money out of reserves to pay the bond for this year, but that's what we're going to have to do. And so, and, and what I tried to point out was, you know, initially, if, if prisoners would have gone in there in April, we would have had roughly 600,000 in the maintenance fund at that time when the first prisoner went in. And now we're looking at, we're going to be at a million, a million two when the first prisoners go in. So we're, we're well ahead of schedule in regards to the maintenance fund, in my opinion. So I don't know that it's, you know, too heavy of an ask, but I think that, and that's, and, and maybe, and obviously I can't speak for Dan Moore because he wasn't there, but that would be a concern, obviously, is that, does this turn into, well, next year, well, hey, help us out, or, you know, and so I, I get that. But I think that, I think we could, I don't know what we could do, but I think there's a way that we could drive the point home that, no, this is a one-time deal. We're not asking for the 400,000. We're asking for a little help here. It might only end up being 100. You know, we're saying up to 200,000 to budget potentially. It could only be 100. It could be 50, it could be 150. But I think it'd be just a shine, a show of good faith if we could do something like that, so.
And I agree. I think that in order to codify that, you could even put it in writing. The LEC authority will expend all maintenance costs for the first year from this. And I think that that would give a little bit of assurance. And before I get the deliberation flag thrown, I just wanted to mention that.
Keith, any questions?
Yeah, not to deliberate, but just to say thank you. Obviously, we've, we've had a lot of discussions on the funds and maintenance of the facility and a brand-new facility. I mean, I, I just really respect that you brought that up. I'm very thankful. It would be great to see a solution. Like you said, you didn't expect to have a 1.2 million day one. And honestly, we're looking at like an 18-year, 20-year maintenance fund, you know. It's, it's been quite a, quite a bit to get this open and, you know, not, again, not blaming the authority, not blaming anybody in particular. Obviously, we want it open. We want to get people in there and get some revenue going, so. But yeah, that would be a huge bone to throw out there for us in a tough budget year.
Yep. All right. Well, we'll, like I said, we'll discuss that again in two weeks and, and we'll let Dan Moore have, you know, hopefully he can make it then and Ron have a good discussion and hopefully a subsequent vote, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other board concerns? All right. Do we need a recess or are you? Okay, all right. Yep, we'll continue with budget reviews. Back to emergency services. B1.
If I could address what we were talking about when we left off on this in regards to the holiday overtime. The actual amounts that go into that line, they get paid double pay. Single, the first eight hours, if they were eight hours, would go into the regular line. The other eight hours is what you're seeing on the holiday line. So to calculate this, you would just take it times 49, times 48 of the hourly rate because you got two people working nine holidays. So the figure of 9,000 is relatively accurate. It probably would be a little bit higher if everyone did get paid for that holiday. However, people take comp time. So why you're seeing a lower amount here is because of the impact of them choosing for comp instead of getting pay. So that, that's why the amount's lower and it is potential that it maybe could be lower because of the practice of taking comp.
So are we low on the other overtime line or are we, can we go back to the regular overtime? Sorry.
So when I figured that, I figured that on what they were making in '23. But what also figures into that is you've got if, if they take time off or if they're sick leave or use comp time. That's why I figured, you know, we are low, but that's where you make up with the 3% raise because, you know, it doesn't always fall. They always get overtime. They don't get the time and a half because they used holidays or, I mean, vacations or comp time or sick leave in that time.
So if we did throw it though at 8,000, that would be.
On what's one?
So if you went to.
Holiday or straight overtime?
Yep.
Okay.
That would still be 25% higher than where we are most likely at the end of this year.
Yes.
You know, what was your term earlier? Splitting peas, splitting?
Nats.
Yeah.
Well, splitting hairs, so.
You know, Scott, you know how I feel about the ambulance service and I talked about it last night in my address. You know, I think the overtime thing is tough to swallow, but at the same time, you're looking at roughly $25,000, which we couldn't hire half of one person for that. So, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I.
That's the point. You know, you talk about another shift. You know, you're not going to hire two people for that, that 16,500. So, and then when you figure benefits in it, it's, you know, it's kind of like, Jeremy said, it's kind of like splitting nats, I guess. You know, I agree, you could cut the overtime out by another shift, but with that overtime, you're not going to cover that.
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. Because I mean, you could play with it and say, well, we got to add another shift, but then you're adding two more people and you're spending way more than 25,000.
Yes, you are.
On the regular overtime line item, it looks like the right amount. I think we could probably reduce the holiday down to 8,000. And I think you're still, like I said, 25% over what our actual is going to be.
And like I say, when I figured that, I didn't figure them taking any comp vacation or sick leave in that time where the holiday fell. So, yeah, we probably could be okay with it being 8,000. If we ain't, you'll see me back.
That's right.
Can we look at page four?
Yep.
Sorry.
Yep.
Look at page four for a second. I was just looking at some, and I know these are, are smaller, but, you know, every little bit counts. I'm just kind of looking at things like the typing, printing, binding, postage, mailing, employee mileage, travel expenses. Just kind of looking at zeros through there. And looking at yesteryear before, some zeros and seeing what are we, what are we doing in those? And then had a couple other.
Like the posting, the mailing, Jeremy, what that is always put in there for something would happen. Emergency services need, need to do a mailing through the county because that's where it would fall on. It wouldn't fall on emergency management. That's where it's at. And that's, that's a lot of that. Only them three, that's what it's.
Same thing with like travel expenses, is that? I'm just looking at stuff we haven't used since 2022, so the last couple of years.
The travel expenses, that's put in for when we, one of the biggest things, it never was used for before. But if we send someone to a class for the, you know, we talked about how the paramedics and EMTs are required to have continuing classes. So if they would go out of our area to take the classes, that's be where now we'd be, we would be using that.
And we haven't had that in the last couple of years?
Well, no, last year we just implemented it and when we started it last year, then most of them had already had to continue at hours. So this year would be the first year of kind of how that will, how that will look.
Are they paid by the county when they go to these schools?
They didn't used to be. They are now.
But as far as are they on the clock, so to speak?
Yes, they get, we pay for the class and we pay for them and we pay them to go both ways. We never used to be, but to me, if, if, if work could require them to have a license to do the job that we ask them to do, then we should pay for the class and pay for them to go. Now, some of the classes are free. And a lot of times there, there's groups, the guys and women, that'll go to them and they don't turn anything in, but.
I think the Board of Supervisors made that call two years ago, so.
Yes. And you guys said the presence of it and I just brought it back up that.
I just remember being chair when we discussed it, so.
Yes.
Okay. That's satisfactory to me. And then the other, the other couple that I just wanted is repairs and maintenance on the building. And this is something that's kind of come up in some other budgets, whether. you know, that's something that's already in Kenny's budget, or I know we were looking at doing something more systematic, long-term, and so just looking at, you know, through this year, having 3,000, and then we're staying at 12. Personally, I like to see more housed under building services budget, but just wondered what we're forecasting, looking at there, and...
Well, it'd be like last year in '23, '24, a lot of that was spent in the fall and summer, and that's where that, where we sit now, that's where it'll be at. Because you'll, you'll spend a lot of that in your, in your late spring and your summer before the budget season's over. You know, they do some repairs this time of year, but we don't do a lot. It's usually in the spring and the summer. That's how it works in. And no, this is, I mean, just so you guys know, this is not in Kenny's system. Our building, the repairs and everything done there, and the biggest part is it's done by the people there. The bulk of the work is done by the people that work there. There are some we have to send out for the boiler and stuff like that, but the bulk of it's done by the people that work for the county.
And then my last one, sorry to be a frequent flyer here, but repairs and maintenance for vehicles, just kind of wondered, going up to 11,000 or 12,55?
Yeah, well, we have, we have that, we have a, I can't even remember if it's a Dodge, it's getting miles on it, and versus replacing it, you know, there's a lot of things that's going to come to be, need to be fixed on that pickup. And so that's why I upped that a little bit. My total operating budget did not go up more than 3%, but that's just where I'd stuck it. Because I figured with that, and then of course we had a, you know, all the other trucks are getting older too, so it's, you know, versus replacing them, you know...
Well, anymore, $1,000 is just one additional repair.
$1,000 won't buy a set of tires for that truck, I tell you the truth. You know, you're talking 15, 1800.
Dennis?
On 4,4600 repairs and maintenance of radios, we haven't spent anything this year. We just bought them brand-new radios. Do we need 3,500 next year? Or is there a reason we haven't spent it because we have new radios?
No, I don't, yeah, you're, you're right, Dennis, I don't see why, like, why don't we just cut that down to, cut it in half? Because we are going to have to replace some battery, you know what I mean? The old ones get rolled into case they're disastrous, so there will be batteries replaced, but we could cut that 3,500 in half.
So we got 1,000 on overtime and 1750 on radios, is that... What'd you do on radios, 1700?
1750.
Michelle, do you have a current number for 43,000 LP natural gas, where they're at?
Those are all based off of this year's gas rates, right?
Yes, that's off the rate. It's what we, the gallons we used last year and with the price that we got this year.
The current on that is 2,631.
Because I know my home sold almost all propane, and I know last year it was terrible.
Well, it was.
I mean, it was the highest it had been in a long time.
Yeah, I mean, you can see that here, it was, it was quite a bit, and then I, you know, I didn't, yeah.
So what I'm saying, but this year, it's been a lot nicer, it's been a lot cheaper. So, you know, would you be amiable if we dropped that 16,845 down to like 13,000 or something like that, or 14?
I, I, I don't see a reason we couldn't go to 14.
Did you say 14 or 15?
Let's drop it to 14,000.
Yeah.
So a drop of 2,845.56.
Long as you don't make me shut the heat off.
We don't want that.
We don't deal in pennies, by the way.
Any, any bats, how's that going?
Uh, since we've had the bat mitigation done, and then we did have a company coming to Tuck Point, did take the chimney down to the lift.
Oh, they, they came in there already?
They did come and do that, and we haven't, we're knock on wood, we've been pretty good. But I know that bats go dormant, I didn't know they hibernated, so come spring, we'll probably have the bat people back to make sure, you know, we'll do another thing, have them back for a service call and make sure we get rid of them. Because my thing is if we keep after it, you know, I'm sure once isn't going to be enough, but we can get rid of them.
Sure.
And they did a very nice job cleaning up, very nice job cleaning up.
On the...
On the bats.
On the second story up there?
Yep, third story.
Really?
Very, very, very good job cleaning up.
Awesome.
I was very, very impressed with their work.
Who was it that did the bat mitigation?
Sutland Bats.
Okay. Because I know there's somebody at Sutland Bats, and I know there's one in Madonna, that's...
The gentleman, one of the gentlemen that's part of the business is actually from down that area.
So I'll go ahead and move the reduction to 5595.
Can I just ask one more, sorry?
To receive with that reduction, but you can keep talking.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor.
Is that in 56 cents?
Uh, no, Dennis said no pennies.
They're already in the budget.
Dennis hates pennies.
We got, we're trying to get to who Tyler's hit, but they don't understand it yet.
I'm going to, I'm going to charge him $4.01 for Roy and Charlie's eggs.
Scott, what's the dues and membership? That's $800, but it doesn't look like we've expended that for three or four years.
There is, memberships are different things that they do that Gary used to have, and for himself and for Andrew, and I haven't got into them yet.
Do we, do we really need them?
I can't, I can't tell you, I can't tell you yes or no.
Okay.
I mean, honest, you know, I'll be honest, day is long, and I can't tell you yes or no until I dive into them more, I won't, I won't be able to answer that question.
How, how much harper would you have if we took that out? I mean, I just look at something in this budget year, we haven't expended in four years, I don't know how many years, so I just...
I'd probably take it out, but if it ever happened, they got to come back, I guess we could put it back in, as long as I cover my budget for the whole year.
So what is the, not to change, I'm fine with that, Jeremy, the next one down, 63 out of 2 machinery and equipment, and it cuts off. Michelle?
You know what that one is?
Um, I believe that's safety equipment.
Oh, safety equipment, okay.
So we want to amend that then to 6395 total reduction?
Yeah.
It could be amenable.
So my motion is now that.
Well, I'm asking about the safety equipment here, so bear with me. What is a lot of that equipment that you're into buying with that, Scott?
Well, that's like any maintenance we do to that large, 208 large air truck, is, is all come through that.
Okay.
Anything that we do that's our safety equipment that needs repair or any work done on, that's where that comes from.
So you could have little, nothing one year and quite a bit the next year.
That's the problem, you take an annual inspection, that truck is, is over two grand, and that's going to be due this, this spring, and that's saying they don't find anything.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, a burst disc for that truck is 300 bucks, and they're that big.
Yeah.
But it is what it is, and there's eight of them.
Yeah.
So you don't replace one, you replace all eight, because if you have one bad, you're going to have another one quick. And when the truck's needed, it's needed. It isn't the fact you're going to go out in the field and say, hopefully I don't blow one, if you're going to blow one, if you blew one, you replace them all, because when you need that to be at a house fire, you need it to be there and working right. And that's another thing on that truck, someday the board's got to look at replacing that air system in that, because there was only three of them made in the world, and there's only two left, and we have one of them. So a lot of the parts, they have to retrofit for other things. And the last I talked, it was over 100,000 to take that truck down to Florida and put in a different air system to it.
That sounds like a wonderful plan ahead, apply for a MURD grant.
Could be, yes. Yes.
Yeah, you and I talked about that when I was down there last, but we walked around that truck. All right, I'm finally in, so I'm fine with Keith's amended motion.
6395, is that what? Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All pose the same sign, motion carries 5-0. All right. Item B2, emergency paramedics.
All right, so allowing the increase on that is the overtime. That is it.
Wages, right?
Yep.
I'll move to receive. Second for discussion.
I was just going to ask, I'm sorry, are we on paramedics?
Yes.
Yes.
So ambulance assist on revenue, is that a placeholder in case we ever get?
No, so when they, when they do an ALS and BLS call, for all ALS calls, we backcharge the service. So that revenue is where that's figured out. Now, if, Michelle, if you go back to the previous budget for 41, you can see what that was, by Dennis's suggestion, we moved it from the EMS budget and put it with the paramedic budget.
So is it not accurate that we haven't received any revenue for the last three years?
Well, we have, but it's under the EMS side. It's not under the paramedic side, because we moved that item from the EMS budget to the paramedic budget.
Okay, so it's zeroed out here and then funded elsewhere?
Yeah, I won't show you any past years on this line.
Thank you.
And we have, we are moving them to budgets together, right, Dennis?
Correct.
Both on the general.
It's going to be a separate department division under General Sup. Originally, it's funded out real basic and general basic, but to help our dilemma with keeping with the tax situation, we moved it to General Sup Unlimited. Now, there may be ways down the road here, funding options when we get toward the end here to help us here.
Okay. All right. That was a motion by Nelson, second by Jeremy, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose and sign. Motion carries 5-0. All right, item B3, animal control.
And nothing's changed there.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second that. Motion by Taylor, second by Bintenger. Any discussion?
There's Radig in.
Right, right. Sorry, I apologize. Radig.
That was our discussion, though.
Right. All right.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. We need to...
Oh, yeah, EMS training, did you talk about that?
All in favor, say aye.
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 It's actually not in here, but it's an in-and-out grants for training.
We're getting into it and evaluating it. Dennis and I worked on it some today, and there's some more work I need to do on it with the Treasurer's Office, so we figure it all out, and then we'll be back to you guys.
It doesn't show a page in our budget book on that?
No, it was missed, but it's a no-tax fund, so there's no effect on taxation. And what he's talking about, the fund balance, it is rather big, but we're going through the receipts, and receipts have been miscoded, and some money received, they're back in 2015, it was never spent. A big grant from CF Industries.
Okay. So what do we need to do today, Dennis? Nothing's...
Just approve it.
Just approve it?
Or receive it, I mean, receive it, yes.
I'll move to receive.
Second. All right. Motion by Radig, second by Nelson. All right, all in favor?
Thank you again.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. All right, item C, emergency management.
You go back to Supervisor's section, page 38, and this is an allocation, and Mike can talk about it here, but originally I had put in 150,357 because we did not have a budget at that point in time to put in when we published this book. Now, with the budget being approved by the commission, which we have a board member sit on that, other members from various agencies, is going up to 212,849. And Mike can go on from there.
What was the number again, Dennis? What was that number again?
212,849. And I'll tell you what the increase is here from what we have budgeted. That's an increase of 62,492. And basically, the reasons are a new vehicle, and then the commission agreed to hire an assistant also, part-time, I believe, isn't it?
Full-time, sir.
Full-time.
Okay.
So it's 90% more than what we just cut after the last 20 minutes.
And again, this is pretty much mandated, we got to do it by law.
All right, board discussion?
Who's our liaison on that? How'd the discussion go there in your...
It went, well, I think Mike did a good job of laying out some of the roles and responsibilities. The redundancy, especially when it comes to emergency management, is something that's a key, and so making sure that we have increased coverage for some of the kinds of emergency management that really stretches from yesteryear, I mean, even thinking about things from a terrorist standpoint in terms of, of towers and the kinds of things, I, I look at from a National Guard perspective, in the last five years, if you even asked me what a deratio was five or 10 years ago, you know, some of the, the civil disturbances, weather, and all of those things, having that redundancy, I think, was one of the keys that I think the commission thought was a critical thing. So it was a unanimous vote, and I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mike, in terms of John and his role?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the kind words, and when I came here from the city of Chicago, it was my goal here to empower our community here in Woodbury County to build top-of-the-line teams and top-of-the-line programs that increase our resilience. Now, we can talk about the statistical value of life all day long, but it's 2024, it's about $10 million in US dollars, and we are investing 213,000, give or take, on your side of it, which, as your advisor here in Woodbury County, I would say is absolutely a worthy investment, 213,000 to make 10 million. And I just want to thank you for that support and allowing us to continue to build those programs. John has done a phenomenal job, and he has also allowed me to kind of move from doing the daily operations of the department to now going and pursuing additional funding and revenue streams for emergency management, but also some of our other cities, as well as our other departments as of right now, and this is only the first month of the year, we're pursuing approximately a quarter million dollars in different technologies and other abilities for the Sheriff's Office, 911, and also emergency management in the city of Sioux City, so, thank you.
Any discussions? Any questions?
I, I don't want to take this discussion too far afield, but while we have you up here, Mike, have any experience with medical examiner world in your lifetime, or ever imagined that you were an assistant would have a role in any of that? Just, I'm sorry to throw that little curveball at you while you're up here for budget, but just out of the ask, as we have been tasked, I don't know if you've been following a little bit of this, with, you know, finding people in the medical examiner world, and we've talked about paramedics and former nurses, and in your experience as emergency management, if we drew a Venn diagram, ever had any overlay with medical examiner kind of duties or augmenting or helping?
So there is some overlap, particularly when it comes to disasters, and usually what we look at there is when we have mass fatalities. This is something that I did back in the Chicagoland area, especially during COVID, before I went full in emergency management, I was public health for one of the larger municipalities in the Chicagoland area. So we definitely did a lot of work with our medical examiner, however, I never did any direct work as far as oversight or anything else with them.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to, to see who wants to take on potential increased responsibilities as, I know Supervisor Hung is, is listening intently and has rolled up his sleeves on that issue as well, so, thank you.
All right. Okay. I don't believe we've had a motion. Need a motion?
Receive?
Yeah.
We have to receive it plus 63,492.
62,492.
62,492.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, motion by Radig, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Next up is juvenile detention, D1.
That's under the tab juvenile detention and runs to page three through six. And he's not here, but I explained most increases here. But he increased his regular budget 133,000, 133,496. Of that, wages and benefits accounts for 107,000 of that. Also, the food costs went from 55 to 85, that's an extra 30,000, because they're serving, you know, more clients up there, they're full all the time. And the other increase would be household and institutional supplies, 8800. That's, goes along with being a full house all the time and things are needed. Did have a couple decreases, but overall basis, food, household supplies and wages and benefits.
So, do you want to let's talk about food for a second? So do we know where we're at halfway through this year?
She can pull that up.
We're at 44,171.
Oh, we're right on target.
Say we're almost low.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I know we had the new contract, I don't remember how many, was that four or five months ago? But, uh, again, they had asked for an additional, I mean, how many, we did like two or three contract changes in that one year, just food inflation.
So, who was that contract through, I'm trying to?
Is that who it is, Sioux City Schools? Okay.
And I seem to remember the discussion being on what I, cost savings, that was to be, you know, and that's one of the reasons that we went away from CMBA?
It says Summit Foods in here, I don't know.
So I'm just, I guess I'd like a little more granularity on that, because I remember having the discussion whether or not, I mean, the Sioux City Schools has an enormous operation, right? You got 14,400 some odd kids, they're feeding, I remember asking a question, what about the jail? You know, here we are and, uh, and I know that was a bridge too far, but I just, uh, do we have that many more residents? That's a huge, $30,000 in food with, uh, what I thought was a reduced contractual cost. Seems like you should be having 30% more, or 55% more residents if your costs are going up by 55%.
Yeah, that's how I understood it too, is that there was gonna be a drastic rate cut to what we were spending. And obviously, we've got a drastic rate increase here. So something's not chiving.
And I guess then on the revenue side, I mean, you would think it would follow that, you know, you have this many more kids, right, if you're usually, so I, I guess I'm curious on all that. And I, and I, I realize everybody's got things definitely going on, but I just, I hesitate on the overall. Dennis, is how much more than yesteryear?
Uh, 100 for the whole budget?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's 166,000.
You're talking about 30,000 increase in food.
Yep. Then 107 on wages and benefits.
Well, their 2018 to 2019 food service contract, I just found the PDF of that, that was 57,828. So that was 18 to 19. So, yeah, it's definitely more. I think the 88 or 85 is where it should be and in fact might be low. But yeah, I don't know what, uh, what the contract was supposed to be with the school district versus Summit, this was with Summit, but.
I guess I just, I'm, it'd be one thing if it was $3,000, but, you know, we're talking $30,000 and we don't have the, I'd almost wanted to defer for a couple, you can get some more information. I just hate saying, well, them's the shakes and I bet it's $30,000 and shoulder shrug, I mean, that doesn't seem like.
We could defer to probably the 20th.
Yeah, I'd be all right with that.
We only have two items on there, plus all the budget reviews at that point in time.
With the capacity out there, is that only like 1,500 a kid, though, for the whole year?
How much?
Is that about 1,500 per kid increase for the whole year? Right, I mean, it's really, when you look at the, I don't, I, I'm fine with deferring if you guys want to.
I think we should, yeah, I agree, we should, all right.
So I'd move, I'd move to defer the juvenile detention budget and if we could get just some of those, um, questions answered, I think we'd feel more comfortable. That'd be my motion.
Do you want to, um, defer one and two? And have?
Which district?
Just two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay. All right.
If we could have a separate motion for each of them for the minutes, please?
Okay. So for.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion by Taylor, second by Radig to defer. D1.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion, any discussion?
Do we have to put a defer to, Dan?
No, because I'll talk to Matthew when he gets back, when he want to put a 13th or the 20th.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. For D2, I'll move that motion to defer.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Radig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion passes five zero. All right, number three, from Board Administration, Dennis Butler, Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, what this involves, we were talking about equipment or, uh, new equipment going out, the new LEC such as, uh, oh, there's a machine that reaches, they have to have that, um, snow blowers, things like that. He had a list, but it's listed twice, it's listed once in a, this current fiscal year, it's also listed next year. Suggestion is talking with Kenny to buy it all this year before June 30th, if you have an idea what he needs, buy it now, take it out of next year's budget, 105,000 on the LEC budget.
And, and I talked with Kenny about some of the, so some of the items that were in there, one is a scissor lift, so that they can do repairs and maintenance behind the cells. Um, there was a snow blower for the front of the skid loader, so they can move snow on the sidewalks and stuff. Um, one of the things they wanted to get was a, was a UTV for doing landscaping. I talked with Kenny, I was like, you know, there, there's not gonna be a whole lot of landscaping, you've got pickups. And so Kenny was very amiable about cutting that out, which would probably be about an 18 or 20,000 dollar reduction there. Um, you know, we, he was fine with that. Um, I can't remember what, some, a carpet puller, there's a few things that were pretty jail-specific, but yeah, that's what we talked about last week.
So, so really, if he doesn't spend it all this year, it'll just flow back into our cash reserves, but we just delete the whole thing next year.
Yep.
The 105.
So I'm just trying to, sorry, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this. So, when are you actually suggesting that Kenny make the purchase?
This current fiscal year, before June 30th.
In FY, in FY '24?
Yes, current year.
Okay, and.
Which is already budgeted for.
Right, yep.
Okay. And that was budgeted last year for this year? And you're saying it's a duplication by having?
Yeah, it's his current year budget.
Okay, it's in, it's in FY '24, so why does it have to be in FY '25?
Right, that's what I was saying, please delete.
So it'd be a reduction of 105,000 for fiscal year '25, but what Kenny is saying is, he's budgeted 105 for this year, for '24, but he's not gonna spend that, because he's not gonna get an ATV anymore, which is 18, 20,000. And then, you know, depending on what some other stuff costs, it'll be lower.
So that's what'll go into reserves from '24, we're deleting '25.
Whatever, whatever he spent, exactly, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then what does that leave, you know, I know we talked about this a little earlier, is it leave roughly 200 some odd thousand that we were talking about with what Kenny had programmed?
It's around 250,000, which Mark was talking about, of taking that out of the 25 budget, if the agreement comes between the LEC and the board, and really budget that money over in the LEC maintenance fund for one year. And that's taking out, so potentially you could have another reduction there of 250,000. On page 18, under building services.
Yeah, I'll walk you through, guys, what I was looking at.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Um, so if you go to page 18 of Kenny's building services, if you remember, we took the 25,000 out on 44,100 repairs and maintenance building, we took that out last time. So what I envisioned a reduction was line items 44,100, 44,400, 44,500, 44,701, 44,900, um, 44,901, 44,902, 47,500 would stay, uh, 48,702, 48,703, and 48,704. And that adds up to roughly, um, that's like 202,000, something like that, if you want to get a calculator out, but it's roughly 2,000, $200,000. And then we would scratch that 105,000 on 63,500. So if the LEC would be amiable, we could almost essentially reduce Kenny's budget by 305,000 on this new LEC.
I think, and I feel more comfortable now that we have this on the agenda, talking about it without, um, I think that that would be great. And not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I think no matter what, we should either reduce this down to nothing, or hopefully they will pick up, you know, an up to amount. But yeah, I think that that would be, that would be great, because I don't think we're gonna spend it, in my opinion. But I, so.
I mean, there's some things, I mean, they're for sure gonna spend, you know, like some of the permits, that sort of things, there are gonna be filters in certain maintenance that they will spend, but you're right, I mean, I, we don't know. I mean, we could put a better, together our best guess, we're gonna have some warranty stuff, there could be nothing that breaks, you know, but I mean, for sure, there's gonna be filters, those, those types of things, you know, so, um, but anyway, we'll see if we can get that done in two weeks.
And, and they may not spend all the money that they're moving over also. So if they move 220,000, or the number is, they may not spend it all. So that won't hurt the maintenance fund as much as some people may think it does, it'll save us the next fiscal year, but I wouldn't cut anything until we got an agreement.
Yeah, and that, yeah, exactly right. And I told Ron that during our discussion today, I said, yo, if Kenny's budgeting 200,000, to me, that's still worst-case scenario. You know, it could only be 100. And then, then the LEC is technically still 300,000 ahead in the maintenance fund versus if we'd opened day one, you know, so, um, I'm trying to sell it as best I can.
Well, yeah, day one, you're supposed to be at 400,000, you're gonna be, even if you spend 100,000, you'll be at 1.1, so yeah, you'd be 700,000 ahead.
Yep.
Even if you spent 100,000.
For next year, so it'll be a million two, then next year will be a million six, so possibly, possibly 200,000 now. And that's if they spend it all.
Yep.
And that'd be on a plan where Kenny can do it with authority, you know, give him that permission to him. But it's a step in the right direction, I believe.
But yeah, so those, those, I just wanted to go through, I'm glad we did that, those are line items that I considered. And, uh, the biggest thing is it has to be repairs, maintenance, it can't be an operating expense.
Correct.
Per Jason Kaminsky.
Right.
So.
All right, any other discussion? All right.
We have a motion on three yet?
Not, not yet, need a motion?
I'll move on three.
Second.
All right, motion by Radig, second by Taylor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero.
I will send out probably tomorrow or Thursday, an updated where we're at after today's actions by tax fund.
Can I just ask for a quick reminder on, do we have any responsibilities in terms of approval of claims? Will we get a call, just, can you just remind those of us who don't listen as well as some others?
I believe you'll probably be getting calls because we have a weekly well-marked claim that I don't think that we will be able to defer. I think that's the only one I'm aware of. I did ask the department heads if they have any claims that might be due and to be considered and we were able to get all those in in time to be approved tonight.
And as far as we know, there's no need to take a special meeting right now that we know of from anyone in the audience?
For the hiring. Yeah, that got on the minute random. Yeah.
That was today.
Yep.
Okay. Didn't know if there was another one.
Yep.
Yep, all right, no meeting next week, anything else? All right, we're officially adjourned.